Call this October 11th Jackson County Commission Meetings Orders. We'll have our roll call. Mr. District One, Mr. Guthie.
Present.
District Two, Mr. Venable.
Present.
District Three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
District Three, Mr. Four, Mr. Level.
Present.
All right, we have the four of us present. Have our invitation by Mr. Porter and our flag by Mr. Level.
Lord God, our sovereign Father, we're blessed to be here. We're so thankful to live in this country, to live in this county. It's a beautiful county, it's a beautiful country. We're thankful for that, God. As we go into this election cycle, we pray for wisdom, we pray for guidance, we pray for your will be done. So, we pray for your presence as we go to polls and we elect folks to represent us in the government. God, help us always to remember that you're in control and you're in charge no matter what happens. It gives us comfort, it gives us hope, we're so thankful for that. Watch over us and guide us every day in Christ's name. Amen.
My first lay is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is approval of the agenda. We have eight items on the agenda. Any changes before proceed?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a request that we add one item to the agenda. Possible future purchase of equipment for Jackson County Public Works pending inspection of vehicle.
Is there any objection to adding that? Okay. Any other changes before we proceed?
Number four needs to include that and also.
Okay, yes. All right. Any other changes? Okay, if no other changes, we'll approve the agenda with nine items. There are no change of motion to approve with nine items and we change item number four. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. Okay, in the awards, any one of the sons of the speak? Okay. No minutes from previous meetings, no old business, so we'll go through new business. And the first item is regarding the funding for the Circuit Clerk's office. We had discussed this in the past at our budget meetings as to how we want to proceed on this. We do need to make a decision. Myself and the Circuit Clerk did meet with Senator Livingston last week to discuss this. I think he's looking at some opportunity to maybe fund this for the short term. When that decision will be made or if that's a possibility, we don't know. So, as a commission, again, we did discuss it. I think we need to give a final answer whichever way we want to proceed with this. Even if it's, if we choose to fund it, I think it should only be done until the Land Slay Delegation makes a determination on those funds that are vested under there or some combination something with that. So, any recommendations on how we want to proceed with this?
Does her funds need to be paid in months on them like that?
The way that it was being done before was monthly.
Do they have the funds to carry them to the first half of the year? We could pass that we would fund it through one of these dollars if the delegation hasn't done something by January first?
I don't believe that they have the dollars to do that. I don't know for sure. The way that their dollars work is they have to send those dollars to the state every month in order to keep those folks. They may have been able to survive this month, but I don't know that they can go much longer than that.
So, we could pass a motion to fund for three months. If it's to January, then we go get the capital account, go find something with it.
Yes, we could do anything.
I'll make a motion to fund it for three months.
Okay. Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
We could pull those dollars from.
We would have to pull it out of Fund 112. I say we would have to. The land redemption dollars have to go to the general fund, so we would end up putting that into the general fund, which 112, even if we wanted to pull it from the land redemption fund, that's where those dollars would come from.
But it can be earmarked to use land redemption funds for three months.
Right. The dollars we transfer to the general fund use those. So, we want to make your motion to approve that?
I do, and I thought that's what we were going to do. I make a motion to fund it for three months for land redemption.
So, the motion as it stands now is to fund it for three months using those dollars transferred to the general fund from the land redemption account, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and do you hold that second still?
Yes.
Correct. Some questions or comments on that? You've made mention, yeah, it'd be, oh, you say in October, November, and December is what you're saying.
That's great. Just give us a little bit of time to figure out when we're doing. Do not just become like legit Adam. I'm ready to do it. That period of time.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. Next item, contract for updating electrical at the county boat park boat docks. Do you have those given out?
Well, those, Mr. Hyatt, was given before Scottsboro Electric took over the primary in the park. One of them gave this afternoon. So, that first one, which shows is, it's not comparing apples to apples now.
Okay.
So, I think we need to go back and I need to get Scottsboro Electric to see what they're going to do and then we'll proceed from there and just give them rebid and then.
These are simply quotes, or I guess one identifies the number to whatever. But would we be able to do that within two weeks so we could have that at our next meeting?
I can try my best.
And what you're saying is we'll get Scottsboro Power Ward out there. If ever, I think we had to vote on this, didn't we? Scottsboro's taking over all the primary at the park. We entered at that agreement, so that's where some of these costs may change, like you said, right?
Right.
Okay. So, any objection if we proceed like that? We'll basically go back and firm what Scottsboro Electric Power Board's doing and then get new quotes based off of that. Which should reduce our cost. Okay, anything else, Mr. Varners?
No, I guess that's what I'm handling.
Any question, other questions or comments? Place that on the next work session if there's anything available. If not, we'll pull that off, but we hope to have it by the next meeting in Terence. Okay, next items, the funding for water projects. You have a packet that identifies. The first two pages are the industrial park project that we were funded for by the state. We got confirmation on that last week that we received that. The next three items are three other projects that we've discussed in the past, items that can be done. So, the proposal on the table, I think this, again, we had discussed this before as far as funding this. The Jackson County Water Authority voted at their last meeting to fund the material cost on the, not the industrial project, but the three other projects. So, the breakdown of how we would move forward, the plan to move forward with the water line replacement for the CWBG grant, the dollars that we would commit to that project would come from our industrial development fund, the annual tax one percent that's left that we have based on the change in the bill. The other three projects, which is a substantial amount of money, would be your estimated project cost minus the material cost is what we're committing if we plan to move forward with these other three projects. Now, these projects, if you look at the first one on County Road 42, that will connect our Wondable location with the facular water line. This is going to help with pressure in that area and allow for fire protection in that area. It'll pick up, I think, around 10 or more residents and/or businesses in that location. So, that's the, the cost on this one is due to having to cross another stream, which I think we've got a permit to lay the line out and start to have to bore under that stream. The next item, County Road 531. This is one that's been talked about quite a bit. If you're familiar with that area, there's kind of a swampy area back there. By doing this, this would allow fire protection on Fire 31. It would give water access to these folks, potential 11 customers. And there's a possibility, there's not a guarantee, but there's a possibility that on 220, we can add fire protection. I think when we came in office two, maybe two or three years ago, folks were requesting some fire hydrants at that location, but the pressure was not bothering them. This could add enough pressure. They won't know until the puts are put in, but there's a possibility that'll increase pressure and allow for some fire, better fire coverage in that area. And then finally, County Road 105. This was another one brought to our attention in the past couple of months, potential 13 customers. This will finish off water access on County Road 105. It is expensive. This does not include fire coverage with the quote that you see here. So, questions, comments on this? It's very expensive and never we could commit next year's capital improvement dollars to this or a portion of the capital improvement along with a portion of funds from 112. Or all from 112 if we wanted to proceed.
I've got one question. On the water line replacement project with the CWBG grant, it's partially funded. How come the commission part, our part stayed the same when we started getting contributions from businesses and Jackson County Water Board, their contribution dropped, but ours didn't?
That's what they voted to contribute.
They only voted to contribute the 26,900?
Correct.
Where did the 42,900 come from? Is that what we asked for initially?
That is, that's what we were, that's what we had planned to put in, and I believe, yes, that's what they were going to split with.
Okay. So, when the business contribution increased, that decreased the funds that they were required to lose because that's what they voted for.
Correct.
Got you.
And again, this is strictly up to how we want to proceed. We did receive the grant though, so I think we, you know, we do need to move forward with this. We can adjust that however we want to, but I think.
What's the amount of money in that ADA fund?
At this time, I think it's about $35,000.
$35,000. So, it'll really get close to covering this one project.
Yes.
And the others will be kind of.
The others, they could qualify with.
112 or something like that, right?
Correct.
These are all worthy projects as far as, as far as I'm concerned. Getting good water, these folks is important. So, I make a motion, we accept all projects.
Okay, and for the remaining three projects, the funding, 116 or 112?
Do we need to name the funding source at this moment?
It doesn't have to be.
Because I don't. He says I'm.
116, we paid ATR, ATR PAF, and if we were to pay it from 116, we have to commit next year's dollars from that. But we can, we can come back to the table with that if we want to make that commitment and then choose a funding later. We can do the progress report.
Sure. If you don't want 112, we're going to have to, probably going to put some $116 towards this, but I don't have a good balance on 116. We can spend it once.
All these dollars need to be made available. The quickest project is going to be the CWBG project. The other ones will move a little bit slower. The County Road 42, the engineering's been done on it, so that bid can start, but we still have to go through the bid process, which is going to be another button before we get there. On the other two projects, engineering has not even been done on those, so it's going to be a little while. If we want to move forward with a commitment today, we can come back in a future meeting after we've had time. We don't have the final cash numbers for end of September, so.
That's what I would.
We don't have those yet.
No, this is, this is August. Now, we've got 60, the ADA fund is up to 60, 60,000. So, anyway, I think we need to take just a moment to figure out.
Can we not just go ahead and, and project by project, bring it back to the commission to decide funding for what?
We'll have at minimum four weeks for any of this.
The industrial development fund is at 24,000 as of August, and you get another one that's been deposited.
We'll have two more deposits.
Yeah, my motion stands that we approve these projects and come back with funding at individual times. Is that sufficient?
President, okay. Okay, so a motion to approve these with a decision on the funding coming up to your date for Mr. Level. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any, what other further discussion we have on these? These water projects obviously are expensive. I think it's important to know that this is the kind of thing when we talk about investment in our community, if we want these things to happen, it's going to take local funds from this point forward. There's still a few areas we can receive some CWBG grants for residential areas. There's not many of them left though. So, for these folks that are still without water in this county, it's going to take local dollars to do that unless someone comes in and writes us a check for, you know, for these types of projects, so.
Is there anywhere we can look for these being such rural areas, look at a different type of grant?
That's what we, you know, we presented in Washington. We didn't get any feedback. Presented in Washington that these are the types of things that we need some dollars for. CWBG is really, that's all that I know of. When I look at the grant things that come through on a weekly basis, most of them are for projects outside of an infrastructure project or what's, or an event type things or setting up a program of some sort as opposed to infrastructure. But we keep a lookout and actually, I know our licensed inspector's been looking at some of these things too to see if there's opportunities for grants elsewhere. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve these items tonight and choose the funding, which fund that will be paid out of. The funds are available in a couple of different areas. We just need to determine which one we're going to pay out of, correct?
That's good.
So, a motion, second, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, next item, appropriation for Brian Dutton Fire Apartments from Mr. Level and Miller Fund. I think that totals for $3,000, is that correct? Okay. So, do we have a motion? No, totally. So, we have a motion to approve that funding?
Thank you, Mr. Varners.
Motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this item?
Just, she will not feel that Cam is worried of it. She's not aware of the second one now.
Okay. I think she's thinking, well, but we will. Any other questions or comments? Motion, second, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item is regarding the Red Cross's facilities agreement. Red Cross, I think, is trying to get their books in order. Actually, we discussed this in the work session last week. Okay. So, again, the key thing, if we do choose to do something with that building, there is a 90-day pause in here that we can request them to move to their office. So, any other discussion before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
Motion, motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I should have clarified, not Mr. Porter, did you say anything?
No, so the 90-day termination clause is, should be found. And not only, you know, we had discussed, or you all had discussed allocation of space and the need to get some compensation for the space provided.
Right.
And this one, there clearly is no compensation.
Right. Which, anything that we change again, we have that 90 days and we can renegotiate that.
That's right. But there any strengths will go into effect?
Yep.
So, that's a motion.
They're in.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, next item is IT position. Again, this was discussed last week. Everybody, I emailed out a copy of the job description last week. Changes to this is who the individual reports to, Jeremy Klimster and myself. The external contacts with the phone system is another piece of equipment that was not listed on here and we wanted to clear. Mentioned the AS 400 on here, which we've discussed, know what the need for that. Someone that could competently use that, they don't necessarily have to be skilled proficient, as we do have folks that can help in that process. So, those are the big changes from the ones that you received via email. So, are there any questions or comments about this? This was approved in the budget, when we approved the budget a couple of weeks ago. We just needed to clarify the job description and then advertise it once that's approved. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve the job description and advertise for this position?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. If you have any other questions or comments on this, let us know. We're trying to start advertising this week for this so that we can get this process moving every day. I think there's some, something happening that there's need for that. Okay, next item, budget amendment for the mapping cell phone supplement. Again, this was presented to us last week. We do, we're still working to get the policy together, but in order to get the budget to the state, we wanted to go ahead and amend that budget. What was the total amount for that? That's your question.
$1,500.
Okay, $1,500 to do the budget amendment for, and hopefully we will have the policy agreed next week or two to be presented and discussed. So, any questions on that? Have a motion to amend the mapping budget for the $1,500 stated? Motion, we have a second? Okay, any other questions or comments? This will be, we have the phones aligned, so that's where we can have this amendment be listed in here. Okay, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item, approval of bid on the Jackson County Park Playground. We had two bidders on the playground project. We have a copy of the front bid sheet, and I have a copy of both bids here if anybody would like to review those. After reviewing the bids, you'll notice the low bidder on this, the low bidder did not meet our bid specifications, proposed an alternative basically to the bid specifications, and it would be requested that we, so we're, which would happen before, that we disqualify them?
No, just reject the bid as not being, as non-conforming.
Okay, so reject the bid from Jay Dawson as non-conforming, which leaves one bidder on the table. Do we need to vote on that first, or do we just move forward with?
Just move forward.
Okay. So, the issues that were brought up with that were the type of metal that were being used on that lower bid, and also, we had asked for a specific refurbishment of equipment out at the playground, and the low bid removed that equipment and did not replace it all. There were a few pieces replaced, but it did not replace all of that equipment. So, it left us with not the setup we were looking for, not the materials that had been requested also. So, the recommendation would be to move forward with one stop on this bid. A copy of the, this is a general contractor's license. This was brought up about how the bid process went and whether there was a contractor's license available for one stop, and this is the contractor that we're doing the work that we approved this bid. So, for everybody's information, Carl, do you have a copy? The reason this has been on hold for a few weeks is because of the bids. We wanted to make sure what the difference in the bids were. We spoke with the architect who's been working on the park project and reviewed these bid specs with her. Her recommendation was also that they did not, the lower bid did not bid as per the specifications.
When would be the start date?
As soon as we could get started. If we were to do this tonight, what would be the quickest way to move forward with this?
Two weeks. I think, if I say so.
Yes, sir.
I think, once we shut it down and start to work on it, I don't think we need to open it back up. I think we need to put a sign there, since you know, it's hard for the inconvenience. Something like we're trying to upgrade the, the theme park and, you know, be bigger and better, hopefully reopen.
Well, that's.
But we still got to do some work on the home, the bath house, and we still got a couple of filthy things to tear up out there. And I got told, if we don't start bringing some sand and stuff in right now, and it starts raining, we're not going to get sand. We got parking lots of sand too. So, I just, I want like, if we, this key be closed once we're closing, and we get a sign laid in the next week or so, hopefully.
I think the key thing as we're talking about, we're just making sure folks were aware that it would be closed.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. And I'll try to get that sign laid before the end of the week. That's a, that is.
Have you looked at, it's pretty good. I mean, it meets the, everything that you know of.
Yeah, the stuff we have down here that we're going to refurbish, you can't buy that stuff anymore. Okay, once you refurbish that stuff, it's going to ally probably a bunch of us in here again. So, with that other bid, he was just going to put not really great stuff in. He'd be redoing it in here.
It was a removal of all the old equipment, where we specified a removal of a portion of it as opposed to all of it.
And we also got, he wanted to remove all of it, and so, a doctor had passed away three or four years ago, his daughter donated us a new merry-go-round. She was, we cars loaned it to her from California, she was a pageant, a merry-go-round, they had to put in everything, and that, you know, that was a part of the equipment that he was going to take out. And so, I'll just.
Can we not provide them with a tax ID number and remove this almost $7,000 of taxes on the bill?
Should have to add to that.
All right, that's $7,000 less than what total is, because we would have been able to remove those taxes.
I could do it in a few thousand dollars or.
I could move it to a sparkware.
Yeah, you could have that. I don't see any reason you can't do that, so that'd be tax-free.
It's $7,000.
So, we could, if we were to do that, you don't see any problem?
No problem.
Okay. If we do that, we would approve the bid with that change? That would be acceptable?
I make a motion, we approve the bid, less the taxes.
Let's make the motion. Can I, can I say so?
Yes, sir.
How long, what, 90 days, 120 days?
The bid stays.
120, so why make the sign?
If we open up, I, we put 100, 120 days off. Big problem.
Yeah, we put a max number of days, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Any other questions or anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion in a second? Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. Next item is regarding equipment purchase, possible equipment purchase for public works. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, gentlemen. First of all, I want to apologize for late notification on this. For some time now, we've been on a waiting list to receive possibility of surplus equipment from the state, in particular, large wheeled excavator, the Greedals, which is, a lot of you are aware, is a flagship piece of equipment for our operation. I received notification Friday that there is an option, a piece of equipment that has been turned around at the county would be allowed to purchase. And it is a 2007 model Greedal with 36, north of 3,600 hours, somewhere around 20,000 miles on the run here. The piece of equipment that that would replace is a 2002 model with over 8,000 hours. The piece of equipment that that would replace is a 2002 model with over 8,000 hours on it and has been somewhat problematic in recent years as far as maintenance, maintenance required to keep this piece of equipment in operation. So the approval that I'm seeking this afternoon is Part A, to look at this piece of equipment, determine if it's worthy, have our mechanics check it out. If it's worthy, be allowed to purchase this piece of equipment. And Part B would be to surplus the 2002 model and replace that with a 2007.
Where would we pull the funds to pay for this at?
We would be fine with 100.
And we could take the surplus money and, of course, actually, hold it for some time.
Right, what you guys have allowed us to surplus, there's somewhere near $100,000 in surplus equipment waiting to be auctioned out. And then we're looking at somewhere in a $20,000 range with this old Great All that we think we could recoup there by salvage and that.
So...
You could put some equipment in the old and same male pack.
Yeah, same, same model, Great All XL400, the 2007 model, and then our O2 model is that. We also have a 2011 model that in 2011, we paid 321,000 for by comparison. So these are, you know, they're large pieces of equipment. They're on-road speed vehicles that don't require mobilization by a load board, and they do, they're, you know, heavy lifting, all of our ditching. Most of our operations can be performed with these pieces of equipment.
Other questions or comments? So what we're looking forward to, a motion to approve the purchase of this equipment pending inspection by our mechanics and approval from Mr. Campbell.
And a surplus.
And a surplus, and approval surplus of the other, of the old...
Make that motion.
Okay, any further discussion on this? How quickly, what we know, when will we take that and inspect that?
I call the gentleman today that can give us permission to look at it. We anticipate being on the road to look at it tomorrow, and then we'll know the condition, and I'll be in touch with the recommendation after that inspection.
Any other questions or comments? A motion in a second, all in favor say aye, opposed say no. That concludes the items on our agenda, so move on to our reports. Mr. Porter, do you hear him?
I don't hear anything.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Campbell?
I'll say it.
Mr. Arnold?
I'll say it.
Mr. Venable?
No.
Mr. Venable?
No, sir.
Mr. Graffey?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Level?
No, sir.
That concludes the items from our agenda this afternoon. Don't know of anything other than we will see everybody next Monday, and we will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a second? All in favor say aye, opposed say no.
Mr. Chairman, can you release the amount of money that the water project funded, the total amount?
Once they're bid.
That hadn't been bid yet?
No.
How about, how about the amount of money on the Jackson County Park playground?
Here's the bid sheet. We approved that minus the $7,000. We didn't go with that one because...
Right, right, right. 151, 365, 21 less, sub grant, sub catch. The amount of the Great All, what's your, is your amount of the Great All?
On the cost?
Yeah.
I don't know when, I think that paid Jonathan... Jonathan, is the Great All a bid process, or do we have a...
It's from the state.
But are we our first take, or is it...
Yeah, you...
Can we share the price with them?
Yeah, we can share the price.
There's nobody else that can take it from us or whatever? We don't want to set a number out there.
I don't, we'll have to do something before that.
Do it.
I know that was yours.
Oh, you can have it.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Even though the income is used...
And doing 300, well, we paid, in 2011, we paid 324.7. Plus 321.
Which works out.
So the process is, you get on the list for surplus equipment by category, and then as they reach their hour mark, is determined by the state, and they turn them in, they offer it to local governments before it goes to auction. So the Equipment Bureau processes it and...
Which makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
How many hours were on that one?
70, yeah, it's 37, 36, 74. It's somewhere near 20,000 miles on the run here.